Holding this emergency town hall. Oh, we're recording now. I think you'll see a little window pop up on your screen there to accept that. Um, we're holding these emergency town hall meetings across the province because we really truly are in an unprecedented crisis in our hospitals. And as we can all see, uh, happening across the news right now, pediatric hospitals have also been thrown into serious crisis uh, in a new way, which you know, I know many of you have seen on the news, but we haven't seen in our hospitals for, uh, you know, probably our lifetimes perhaps. And this is joining what is kind of this new normal or beyond normal crisis in our communities, hospitals, clinics. And what's happening is a push for privatization. And I would say that the premier and the health minister haven't even been, uh, necessarily quiet about this. They, they at times have said this out loud in front of press conferences, which we saw right before the provincial election. But this push for privatization has been so deliberate uh, that they're starving our healthcare system and putting it to the brink, which is causing workers, of course, to leave, uh, not want to, uh, go into, uh, that sector because quite frankly, they're all under incredible strain and stress in the jobs that they're doing. And also the solutions that have been put forward, both by the health coalition and many other amazing groups, uh, like, uh, different unions and associations representing healthcare workers have been completely ignored by this government. In fact, they've taken what happened during the pandemic and in ways they've weaponized that against us as a reason to privatize. They're trying to, uh, use this now to say, this is the reason why. But in Windsor Essex, we know that private healthcare, you know, is necessary because when we look across that river into the states, we know exactly, or sorry, I'm saying public, we need public healthcare because we know what private healthcare looks like in the states. We know how people lose absolutely everything they have and go bankrupt for simple surgeries uh, that are life-saving and that are required for them. So I'm sure that many of you, uh, like myself and the health coalition, uh, are certainly looking for solutions, ways that we can protect publicly delivered services. And I know that we're going to fight for it down in our region because we have such strong voices that are out there speaking on it. And I want to give you a little snapshot of what's been happening in Windsor Essex. And perhaps some of these things are things that you've seen in the news as well. You know, we have ambulance services, our EMS that have been running in code black, which means that there are no services available. There's no emergency services whatsoever. This has been happening at increasing levels to the point that paramedics are certainly burnt out. But we saw an emergency declaration on the shortage that happened recently. So we've seen that now Windsor Hospital is, you know, hiring some offload assistance. But quite frankly, these are Band-Aid solutions on a system that's very broken. Uh, and you know, is going to continue to be in crisis for people that need emergency services. Our hospitals, uh, are still in, in crisis and in May at Windsor Regional Hospital, we had the longest wait times in the province. And right now at Windsor Regional Hospital, you're looking at a five hour average. And when we look at Hotel Do, they have a forty bed unit that's been vacant since twenty thirteen because they can't find anyone to staff it. So at times we actually have beds that exist, but we can't get services into those beds because the province is not supplying the funds that are necessary to do that. Our urgent care family clinics have been overwhelmed. I don't know about you, if you've tried to go to one, uh, recently or a family member has, they're having three hour waits. And it doesn't matter which clinic you go to, this is across our entire system right now. And they're overflowing. Uh, we recently saw Doug Ford, you know, come forward with his brilliant solution, which was let's just ask them to work longer in the clinics, which again is putting tremendous pressure on the healthcare workers who already are at the brink and you know, uh, just driving people, I think, out of healthcare entirely. Um, because they're being overworked and certainly underpaid. Our pediatric services, uh, in Windsor are very serious and running above capacity right now. Uh, we of course don't have a pediatric hospital, but we know that the ones across Ontario are well beyond capacity. So we've had this surge in children's respiratory illnesses that have happened with us, uh, regionally. And at the hospital, we've had ninety percent to a hundred and twenty percent bed capacity increase in a very short period of time, and that is only trending upward. Kids that are zero to five right now are having such difficulty breathing. They need increased supports and they can't transfer them into the ICU because those beds are full. So they're having to open up the NICU, uh, for the very youngest to bring them over into there so that they can get the respiratory supports that they need. And I want to read
NICU is just a neonatal intensive care.
Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Natalie. Um, I want to read you this quote from Dr. Sajid Augustine, who's the chief of pediatrics in, in Windsor. And this is what he said, "We have never done this before. We never had to do this before, but the pressure on the system is so high." So we are in crisis in our healthcare in Windsor Essex right now, and I'm very thankful to have some incredible speakers joining us at our town hall today, uh, to bring us more insight into what exactly is going on and, and what we all can do. So I'd like to introduce our first guest speaker that we have. And it is Angela Preo Cannon. And Angela has been a registered nurse for thirty-two years and has been a member of the Ontario Nurses Association for twenty years. She is currently the first vice president and Angela has worked in surgical thoracics, had ennequed urgent care and home hemodialysis. She worked at Saint Joseph Healthcare in Hamilton. And she is a passionate advocate for her members and a stalwart defender of public health. Over to you, Angela.
Thank you, Tracy, for the introduction. And, uh, good morning. Well, actually, good afternoon now, um, to everyone here. As, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Tracy and the Ontario Health Coalition for organizing this important town hall. I'm a proud registered nurse and the first vice president of the Ontario Nurses Association. Owner represents over sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across the province, including eighteen thousand nursing students. I'm grateful, grateful to be here today with you and to have the opportunity to share what is not happening in our healthcare system now and why we know privatization is not the answer. At this point, anyone who's paying attention has heard it before. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We have been in crisis mode for almost three years now. At some point, this is not a crisis anymore. It is the new reality. And I think we know that this cannot be our new reality. We know from the new Canadian Health Institute for Health Information data that Ontario is, has the worst in the country when it comes to RNs per capita. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty RNs for every one hundred thousand people. In Ontario, we have just six hundred and sixty-eight RNs for one hundred thousand people. That means just to be on the Canadian average, Ontario needs to hire almost twenty-five thousand RNs immediately. What does a staffing shortage of this magnitude look like in practice? It's become commonplace for nurses to be kept at the hospital for hours after their shift is supposed to end because the next shift is so short-staffed and it's not able to safely transfer patient care. We have nurses working on, in units where thirty-five RNs would be the norm. But today's new normal is seventeen or eighteen. We have hospitals where there are more vacant positions for RNs than there are RNs on staff. At Windsor Regional Hospital, there are nearly two hundred and fifty vacant RN positions and hiring cannot keep up with the resignations. RNs are having their vacation requests denied and being required to work overtime without any additional support. And of course, we are seeing violence increase, particularly in the emergency rooms where the short staffing means patients are waiting for hours, which then only escalates their anxiety and escalates into violence. Not only are the nurses working short and doing everything they can to deliver their care, but they're being hit, pushed, scratched, bitten, threatened, sworn at, you name it, it's happening. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We always put patient care first, and even in the extreme difficult times, our members find ways to provide the care that they all know patients need and deserve. But the cost of this burden is taking its toll. Early retirements are going up. New grads are rethinking their careers and leaving only after one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure they have a work-life balance. And in the case of Windsor, of course, they're crossing the border very easily and working on the other side while living in the Windsor community. There's a real cost for a healthcare system as the situation worsens. And now the full picture is coming into view. The Ford government is setting the stage to use this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it so much worse, introducing Bill one twenty-four, which caps wages of many nurses and healthcare professionals violating our charter rights. And Ford is refusing to work with to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan, leaving our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. And now Ford is using the crisis, which she has created to push his plan to privatize our healthcare. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves on their world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not on your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public, not nonprofit healthcare because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized, like long-term care and home care. Private healthcare will take away from public care by pulling resources and staff from the public system. As nurses, we've already seen this, as colleagues have left the public system to go work for private agencies. We can't blame the nurses who make that choice. The agencies let the nurses choose their own hours and pay more because conveniently enough, they're not subject to Bill one twenty-four. But there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for their nurses. This undermines nursing as a stable career and undermines your healthcare system by siphoning off precious dollars to line the corporate pockets. This will impact access and quality of care and it will hurt patients who can't afford to pay. We cannot let this happen. Ontario's public healthcare system is not Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off to his corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system is built up over generations and belongs to all of us. And that's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you and will continue to work hand in hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in our public healthcare system so that everyone gets the care they need and deserve. Together, we can stop Doug Ford's plan in his tracks. Thank you.
And if I could just add one little thing, today's, uh, Toronto Star and the Globe and Mail has a full-page ad that we put in, um, and I'll just give you the context of the, the pictures of Doug Ford at the top. It says, "Shortchanging healthcare." And the ad reads like this. "When sick kids can't get the healthcare they need, you know the system is in serious trouble." That's what's happening right now in Ontario. "A surge of respiratory illness is sending children to overwhelmed hospitals where there aren't enough nurses to take care of them. How did we get there?" "Ontario's health system has been underfunded for years, but on Doug Ford's watch, the nursing shortage has become dramatically worse. At a time when retaining experienced nurses is crucial, they are leaving the system in record numbers. They had enough of being overworked and disrespected. Doug Ford keeps coming up short on healthcare. He needs to offer meaningful incentives to bring nurses back into the system and retain those, uh, will otherwise quit." Nurses, our patients deserve better from this government. How bad do things have to get before Doug Ford finally seat, does the right thing? So that's the ad in the Toronto Star and the Globe and Mail, and we'll have another ad next weekend, which is, um, uh, uh, very hard-hitting. And a picture of Doug Ford on it, it's not a very attractive picture of Doug Ford. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angela.
Um, our next, our next guest is, uh, someone who I think a lot of us know well. It's Natalie Mara. She has been the executive director of the Ontario Health Coalition for twenty-two years. She has built the health coalition into the largest and broadest public interest group on healthcare in the province, representing more than three-quarters of a million Ontarians in its network of more than five hundred member organizations and more than fifty local chapters. She is a former board member of the PNAE and Health Coalition, where she spearheaded numerous national campaigns to safeguard and improve single-tier public Medicare. She is the contributing author in three books on healthcare policy, privatization, and building the movement to protect public healthcare. She has written hundreds of articles, reports, and submissions, testifies regularly before legislative, uh, and is featured in hundreds of media interviews, Public Healthcare Warrior. Welcome, Natalie Mara.
Thank you, Tracy. Thanks, everyone. Really good to see you. It's really lovely to see old friends in Windsor, um, and, uh, and, and people here today. Um, I wanted to start with just sort of a, the patient's point of view, like, what is this like? If you're actually trying to access services right now, this is from a mom. Uh, she says, "My family lived this nightmare when my six-year-old daughter was rushed to hospital barely breathing last week. Now she's out of hospital and my cortisol levels are down a bit. I can share our experience and some questions I'm asking. When we arrived at emergency, families were overflowing from the waiting room into the parking lot. Security guards were tasked with maintaining order. I elbowed my way and was immediately seen due to how acute my daughter's illness was. Kids who weren't so sick, they needed the hospital to keep them breathing, were faced up to a fourteen-hour wait at one point to see a doctor. There simply wasn't enough staff. I witnessed a three-year-old with a bleeding laceration on her forehead turned away from the hospital. A couple of kids showed up who required all the emergency staff to keep them alive. The triage nurse explained to the waiting room that their wait would be longer. Parents were irate. A mother screamed at the nurse. Security intervened to protect the nurse from two fathers. During this period, there were no staff available to monitor my daughter. I had, it was up to me to monitor her oxygen levels and administer oxygen and ventilin. The triage nurse did her best to check each kid who arrived, but it was just impossible. She simply did not have the resources and tools she needed. Um, she kept her cool and did her job skillfully and empathetically despite abuse from stressed-out parents. I left her a love letter. Eventually, my daughter received the IV and lung X-ray she needed. We were admitted into acute care where, where we spent three nights with excellent care. She played soccer this weekend without ventilin, so she's back to normal. It will take me longer to recover. Here are the questions I'm left with. How can we expect people to work twelve-hour shifts under that kind of stress and not burn out and leave nursing? I would have lasted approximately five minutes in the job. And it's just the beginning of the flu and virus season. This is year three of the healthcare emergency, she means the pandemic. There are not enough healthcare staff and those left are burnt out and working sick often. What is the game plan here? We can't expect these people to prop up the system forever at the expense of their own mental and physical health. How can we be kinder to each other? I get that having a sick kid in a merge at three AM who can't see a doctor is awful. But I was horrified at the behavior of some parents. And then she goes on to ask about why the vaccination rate for children under twelve is so low and so on. Anyway, that's what it's like. That's what it's like. We're hearing from our own members who are um, parents of kids with profound disabilities, you know, who are, they know what a, a healthcare emergency is. They take care of their kids at home with all the time with complex medical care. And they're being, you know, one of them was telling us she was turned away from sick kids. So they don't go to the hospital lightly, right? They know what, they really do know what an emergency is, and she was turned away from sick kids because she had some equipment at home. And she had to resuscitate her daughter without a nurse or anything at home, uh, you know, by herself. This, um, this crisis, it's beyond crisis, like leading into the pandemic. We called and we thought through our words carefully. We called what was going on in healthcare then a crisis because emerge was overwhelmed, you know, the, all the beds were full in the hospitals. People were lying on stretchers and hallways, ambulances were in overflow delay. And it's only actually gotten worse. It's significantly worse. And I've been thinking to myself, you know, why is it that people aren't like pouring out into the streets in the thousands, you know? Surgeries are canceled, people are waiting for cancer surgeries, they're waiting for heart surgeries, they're waiting for all kinds of what they call elective surgeries, but they're in pain, et cetera. Uh, you know, parents waiting in the emerge, the staff are, you know, staggering under the weight of this load. And I think part of it is that we've gotten kind of used to a level of crisis. And maybe people don't necessarily realize that this is on a whole different scale. But I also think that, you know, it was a media person who said to me, she said, "Every time I do an interview about," I was doing an interview about emergency department overload. Every time I do one, the, the government gives me the same speaking points. They have like their messages, right? They're crafted by PR people. And, um, and she said, "Every single time," it's been like a year, "they just say, 'We're hiring six thousand staff.' The status quo is not sustainable, yada, yada, yada." And, and she was frustrated. But of course, the way that the news story comes across, people raising the alarm about the situation, the media has the answer from the government, the government says, "We're hiring six thousand people," and that's sort of, it bookends it, you know, that's the end of it. The, um, it's like a he said, she said, and then there's nowhere that that ever goes. And this has been going on now for a year and if things got so bad in the summer, we had almost a hundred temporary emergency department closures across the province. In Ontario, there are still local emergency departments that are closed. They've been closed for weeks or months at a time. We have birthing units that are closed in local hospitals because they can't staff them. We have beds that are closed, as Angela was describing, because there's no staff to provide the care on them, even while patients are lined up out the door, trying to get into the hospital, like, what does it take to actually get this government to act with some kind of urgency about the situation? You know, it has to be incompetence or it's purposeful. I mean, there's nowhere in between. Um, and no one's making it up at this point. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of context, like we came into the pandemic in a terrible position in our hospitals. In the last two years, like for decades now, Ontario has pursued a policy of downsizing the public hospitals. Uh, there's a couple of reasons. One is to save money. And the other is that everything that is a cut from public hospitals or shifted out is privatized, right? The long-term care beds that they created to replace the, the chronic care hospital beds, they're the sixty-seven percent of them are privatized, home care eighty percent privatized, right? And then the clinics that they move out, they're majority privatized and so on. So there's like a for-profit business banging on our door and they want to make money out of the billions of dollars that we currently spend on our public hospitals in Ontario. And then there's also been a drive to prioritize, um, tax cuts. Tax cuts, like, I just hope this is clear. Tax cuts always benefit the wealthy. That's what they're for. The people who pay more income tax are the wealthiest people. When we have tax cuts, they're always sold to the middle class as if they benefit us. They don't because they lead to all kinds of new user fees for us. They benefit primarily the wealthy and tax cuts for corporations. And so Ontario now funds all of its public services at the lowest rate in Canada. I'm just going to show you, share my screen. So Ontario has now dropped to the bottom. Can you see that? Showing, right? Ontario has now dropped to the bottom of Canada in the terms of the number of hospital beds per person. So a hospital bed, by that I mean a staffed hospital bed, a bed that is staffed in and operation. A bed is obviously just a piece of furniture without the nurses and the health professionals and the doctors to provide the care for the patient in that bed. Ontario has the fewest hospital beds left per person of anywhere in Canada. Um, and it's a little easier to see on this bar chart here. So you'll see, uh, bar graph that Ontario is at the very bottom. And we're actually a very significant way behind the average, the average of the rest of Canada. In fact, we have about one bed per thousand people, less than the average of the rest of Canada. So we have fifteen million people, right, in Ontario? That's fifteen thousand thousands. We're fifteen thousand beds short of the average of the rest of Canada, just to put it in context. And I want to share my screen again, you know, the Ford government keeps saying these things, like they try to cut off every avenue to actually improve things in the public system because they want to privatize. They keep saying, although the status quo, which they had a large part in creating, is unsustainable. Um, therefore we must privatize. Um, and, uh, so let me just show you this here. This is on our website, by the way, if you're, if you want to see any of these things, I'm just going back. Um, I went to funding here. So this is public hospital funding in Ontario as a percentage of our GDP. That's our gross domestic product, the provincial GDP, which is our economic output. So this is the measure of like, you know, is it affordable? Because, um, you know, how much of your total economic output does it take up? Ontario is dead last in the country, far below the average of the other provinces. This is the, our public hospital funding. And if you measure it, oopsie, sorry. If you measure it, oopsie, what happened here? I'm sorry, if you measure it another way, like there's multiple ways you can measure it. Let's look at public hospital funding per person in Ontario compared to the other provinces. Here we go. Ontario is dead last. By every measure, Ontario is at the bottom of the country in terms of funding our public hospitals. So yes, there is a global healthcare staff shortage as a result of the pandemic, but Ontario is uniquely terribly placed to deal with it because we've gone through us, us, uh, the most radical hospital downsizing program in the country. And actually, if you were to plot us against the entire OECD, that is, and it's on our website if you want to see, that's every developed nation on earth. There's only two countries that have fewer hospital beds left than Ontario does, Mexico and Chile. Like our peer nations have like double the number of hospital beds we have. So no, this is not normal. This is not normal. This is a radical, downsize the public hospitals, move their services out, privatize those services and keep a cap on costs. Um, uh, and fund our hospitals below, uh, to force them to keep shedding services and downsizing. I don't know, Angela, I, I'm not sure if you said, but we have the fewest nurses per person of any province in the country.
That's correct.
So nurses per weighted case, which is a sort of how they make an average patient, um, by a long shot. You know, these things are suffered by patients and staff alike. Um, and so, uh, in the last couple of years of the Liberal government, after they had frozen hospital funding at zero percent increase while the population grew and while inflation went up, um, for ten years. And for another, for, you know, another, I don't know, six, seven, whatever it was years, um, ran, ran hospital funding at below the rate of inflation, so real dollar cuts. Um, in the last couple of years before the election, they opened the purse strings a bit and they started to reopen hospital beds. Then in two thousand and eighteen, Ford came in, um, and he started the hospital cuts again. Um, and so leading into the pandemic, we had cuts to hospitals, real dollar cuts to hospitals, long-term care, major cuts to public health, an attempt to restructure public health and restructure and privatize EMS services. And then the pandemic hit. And so now we have this situation that is beyond what others are suffering. It is extreme and it is extraordinary. And these things are kind of two flip sides of the same coin. Um, leading into the election, in the written pandemic plan, the government had this plan to privatize um, the profitable parts of the hospitals, the surgeries and diagnostics that for-profit clinics would like to take out and make money from. But they hadn't really said it publicly. So we did twenty press conferences or something, warning of this across Ontario. And they sent out a spokesperson behind us. Um, and in every local media interview, they categorically denied it. This was leading into the election. They said, "We are not expanding the private clinics. We are not privatizing" and, uh, private clinics and hospitals. Um, and yet after the election, the, the financial data came out. The Financial Accountability Office of Ontario, which is kind of like an auditor, reports to the legislature. They, um, came out with the fourth quarter data, which is, um, January, February, March, like to the end of March, so right before the election. That's the most recent data we have, by the way. And they showed that they had doubled the funding to the private clinics in the period of time that the ministry spokesperson was literally crisscrossing the province behind us, telling the media that they were not doing that very thing. I mean, they lied outright. And then I just think it matters. That's why I'm telling you, because I think it's outrageous. You can't lie to the public about your intentions leading into an election. And then two months after the election, they convened an extraordinary session of the legislature. They don't usually sit in August. They opened the legislature at the beginning of August and they announced that they were going to privatize the hospitals. And here we are. Now we're months into a crisis, uh, in which we've got emergency room closures, like we, we have never seen anything like that before. I've done this for what, twenty-two years? Never in that time have we ever seen anything like this. So, you know, when people say it's this sort of formula, you know, create a crisis and privatize, or at the very least, do nothing about the crisis, substantially nothing, and privatize. That is what we're facing in Ontario. It's like the green belt, you know, these things are set up to shut, you know, shunt public funds, public assets, um, et cetera, over to for-profit companies that this government is close to. And we don't usually talk this way, but we got to say it. It's what's happening. And we have to do something about it. There is no one else that's going to fight this. Our read on this is it's extremely serious. We've never really, you know, we have had the, the Harris government tried to privatize, the Liberals tried to privatize. In some ways, we fought it off, but you know, this was, they announced it right after the election, so right after they won, far away from the next election, middle of the summer. Far away from the next election, middle of the summer, when the least possible people were were watching. You know, this is like the kinda thing that they do. They slam it in right away. And then by the time the next election comes around, they hope everyone's forgotten and it's in place and kinda undoable, right? So we have to stop this. We have to force them to support our public hospitals. I don't know how we're gonna get through this winter in this situation if we don't. Um you know, and and I don't know how the staff are gonna get through. Um and at the end of the day, um there is really no one else to do it. Uh we have succeeded. You have in Windsor. Force them to refund your hospital, to open sixty beds after a giant march. That the Windsor Health Coalition held in Windsor, your community campaign saved your thoracic cancer surgery. All kinds of other services there. We've stopped them from closing entire hospitals in. Port Colborne and Fort Erie, we saved the birthing units in Midland and Leamington. We stopped them closing the emergency department in Wallaceburg and. A whole bunch of other communities across the province. There's no question. Oh, and we've stopped privatization of the hospitals every single time any government has tried to do it. There is no question we can do it, but we do actually need to be pouring out into the streets in the thousands at this point. We do need to pour the pressure on this government to take action to support our public hospitals. Um and uh and stop their privatization. And that's really what we wanted to talk with you about today. I'm just gonna end with this really quickly. I don't, does, who remembers um Ralph Klein? Do you remember? He was the Alberta Premier. Some of you remember him. This is back like in the Mike Harris days. These were the first governments that ever, you know, since Confederation ever actually. Tried to very significantly dis dismantle the public sphere. You know, they met brought in massive cuts. Massive um cuts to public services, transfer that money back and tax cuts for corporations and so on and um tried to privatize. And so the Ralph government, Ralph Klein government came in and they're all macho. And they blew up the Calgary Hospital. It was like a symbol of their revolution. Actually, they imploded it. And if you, you can, you can see online, there's a video of them imploding the Calgary Hospital. And then they tried to privatize the MRIs and CTs. So like, these are the services that the private clinics wanna take out and sell for profit, right? And um and so the Alberta Friends of Medicare fought back. They're our sister organization in Alberta. We actually all joined in. We had protests across the country and so on and. They um they got all of the patients that had paid for their MRIs in the private clinics. Kinda like people are doing here in the cataract surgery clinics, uh for profit, they're charging people two thousand dollars for the cataract surgeries and so it's all illegal. Um but so they they got people to um send in their receipts. They made a formal complaint to the federal government. They held protests and so on. And when the Ralph, and they forced the Ralph Klein government to pay back all of the patients. Who had paid for medically necessary MRI or CT in the private clinics. It was awesome. And then when the government tried to bring in this bill, this legislation to privatize the hospitals. They had this major protest. I remember watching on TV actually, and there were people hanging from the, from the uh gallery. You know, they they flooded the galleries in the Alberta Legislature. And there are people hanging from the rails, you know, and in this protest. And Shirley Douglas, whom some of you may know, she's the um daughter of Tommy Douglas. Uh who was sort of known as the father of public Medicare in Canada. And she's actually the mom to Keith or Kiefer Sutherland. She was married to Donald Sutherland. Anyway, that's Shirley Douglas. So she was describing it to us. And you know, the prairies are really flat. You can see forever down the prairies. And she said, you could see the cars driving into the protest. There was a lineup of car lights. Down the highway, down the prairie, like as far as the eye could see. With Albertans coming in to protest their government's privatization of um public healthcare. And she said. Uh and actually Ralph Klein in the end said um healthcare was the electric third rail of Canadian politics. So you know, the on the railway, the train goes down the tracks and then there's a third rail that carries the electricity. And you dare not touch it or you'll get electrocuted. Anyway, I loved that. It's like. Let those bastards be afraid to touch our public healthcare, you know? And so it's our job now to electrify the third rail. Thank you very much.
I love that. Thank you, Natalie. That's an inspiring uh message to leave on and listen, we've just witnessed this government. Back down from attacking workers, QP workers in the province. Uh you know, they did an about-face on. On that uh effort uh after considerable pressure uh that came out of the labor movement. But the Health Coalition has been successful in doing the same. There are times that we have pushed. On this government when they have reversed course because of the intense public pressure. And I know that in, you know, Windsor Essex folks are eager to do something as well. And so, you know, we will be starting back up regular meetings of the Windsor Health Coalition starting in January. So we'll be sending out a message and uh to all of you an email. We have all of your information. Uh to let you know about those regular meetings, starting back up and looking at doing a protest in Windsor. Because the more that we can capture public attention. Uh the more that uh we see this government respond, quite frankly. And let's be honest, we have some government members that are sitting now uh regionally. And we need to apply that pressure to them to let them know that what they're doing to our healthcare system in Windsor Essex. Uh is not going unnoticed and we're not going to sit by and just let it happen. Uh we're going to make sure that uh they all know how we feel about what this government is doing. So maybe what we'll do right now, um I just wanted to address though that. I know that it's been raised in in the chat a bit about like how much has already been privatized and I saw that. You know, Riley put in there that of course, uh you know, we've resisted that in our in our hospitals. And this is really what we're talking about because uh as Natalie has pointed out many times. The future that this government visions is that they pull all the services out of the hospital and put them into a. Private clinic surrounding that we'll have to pay for beyond what we already are. I know there's actually folks that are on this Zoom right now who've had experience in some private clinics that have been devastating to their health. Uh that have left them, you know, in in very precarious situations uh with their own health. Because the level of care hasn't been consistent with what we would get in public hospitals. So maybe what we'll do is uh open it up uh to any comments that anyone has, any questions that they have. Uh please feel free to uh raise your hand. You can use the raise your hand function on the bottom. Uh so if you just go uh and raise your hand up, we'll see that you're interested in speaking. Okay, and I see that Antonio uh has their hand up. Antonio, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just testing, see if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So it might be a little out of reach of a question, but. With Doug Ford kind of sitting on billions in funding from the federal government, withholding pay from nurses, deliberately attempting to deteriorate our public healthcare system. And only winning a third of the vote to have this kind of power. What can we as citizens do? Maybe aside from protesting, although I know that is a large part of it. What can we do to really attack the root cause of this discussion, which is? That we don't have proportional representation or rank choice. And we have a leader in power who two-thirds of us did not vote in.
Yeah, I think it's the root of a lot of issues that we have, right? Uh in terms of uh our legislatures. Than our our federal parliament is that our our system is is skewed and we know that better systems exist. But we yet to have a government that is willing to actually put those in place because quite frankly. It keeps returning them super majorities that are false majorities, uh which is what has just happened here in the province. So I see that Natalie's unmuted her.
Actually, I thought you answered it very well, Tracy. I mean, obviously, we support electoral reform as well. I think that's where you're going, Antonio. Um but I mean, we're also gonna fight for to stop the privatization of our public healthcare and and to force the government to um. To uh support the public hospitals and would there's uh in in my mind, if we actually do um make that fight. If we make it visible, if people have a way to join, then we will actually succeed in in the short term in that. But that doesn't deal with your question, um which is the, you know, advocating for electoral reform.
Um I see that there's a a conversation in the chat, you know, about like how effective is protest, right? How effective as a measure? It's certainly not the only measure that we take as a health coalition. Uh we have many charter challenges that we've launched as well in partnership with uh, you know, progressive uh lawyers. Uh in the province to protect the rights of seniors, to protect the rights of citizens. Uh in terms of uh accessing your healthcare and maybe Natalie can speak a bit about. Uh those other efforts that we have beyond obviously our kind of grassroots, which is what we're all here today to talk about. Um there's an incredible amount of work, policy work that goes on uh at the uh Health Coalition as well. And I really do encourage you to check out the website. Um because there is a lot of information uh that is there about this work, but maybe Natalie can touch briefly on uh some of those efforts that we have ongoing.
Sure. So I mean, on the hospital crisis right now. This is what we would kind of have to overcome. Every story, like media has been complaining to me, that every story that they do about the hospital crisis, the overwhelming. Of the emergency departments, they get the same speaking messages, the same speaking lines from the government. These are like created by their PR people and then they just put them out. And there's this kind of idea in. PR people that they just have to have an answer for it. You know, they just have to have a one line. Um that sounds reasonable and it sort of puts the issue to bed. And so every time there's a story about these, you know, crushing loads and disaster in the emergency departments. Um the government speaking line is we're hiring six thousand. Um staff. They've been saying that for what, almost like a year and a half, two years? I'm looking at Angela. It's been going on. And so every single story, that's what they say. First off, we need forty thousand in the hospitals alone. We need fifty-nine, fifty-six thousand in long-term care. Like it's nowhere near the what we need. And the second thing is that you can't just hire in like a few staff here and there. You know, six thousand spread across Ontario over the course of a year and expect to make any difference. Because they go into the workplace, it's impossible. The workloads are impossible. They're, you know, they're facing violence. They get hurt very easily. There's a big injury rate among healthcare workers. Um and they leave. In long-term care, the CEOs of the homes tell us. That they get new um staff in and they don't last two weeks in the homes. They're gone. And at the mo- like the data bears this out. We're losing more staff than we're gaining. We're in a net loss position. So whether or not they ever did hire those six thousand, who knows? It's impossible to track and they're, you know, because they're very ideologically pro-privatization. They're using the private colleges and things like that. What we called for was a big bump up. Because staff shortages beget staff shortages. The fewer staff you have, the more every minute they're off. Like there, we, a respiratory therapist we were talking with, working seventy hours a week. You know, called in every minute she's on, she's off for more overtime because they don't have enough people. Same with the nurses. You know, every time they're off, they're called in and they feel guilty because they know what their colleagues are going through. You just can't live under that pressure forever. Um and so that's. That's the situation. So we said, like Quebec did right after the first wave, and we've now been calling for this for two years. They, the government did a mass recruitment. They hired ten thousand PSWs, their equivalent in Quebec. They paid them for training, twenty-one dollars an hour. They increased their pay to twenty-four dollars an hour. They did an intensive training of them and they got them into the homes um in time for the second wave. And they had a much better second wave than we did. Um we we had thousands of people die in the second wave in long-term care in Ontario and the government just refused to do that. Uh um so that would help with long-term care, home care and um. Chronic care hospital beds, the complex continuing care hospital beds, the ones that have PSW staffing them. Nurses and health professionals take longer to train. Um and so, yes, they have to increase the med- the enrollment in colleges and universities and so on for that. But in the meantime, the only solution is to attract back the ones who've retired out early or left. Because they couldn't take it anymore. And to do that, they've got it, one. There's wage suppression legislation, Bill one twenty-four. Can you believe, I just, this boggles my mind. In the middle of a pandemic, in the worst crisis we've ever seen, they have wage suppression legislation for healthcare workers. To keep, um they they've capped any increase at one percent. Inflation is running at what, six percent or something like that? So it's a real dollar cut to them. But moreover, there's a huge shortage and it does, you know. I don't think people are leaving because of the pay and at that level in the in healthcare. But it's a fork in the eye to these people who have. Um you know, dedicated their lives, who've given so much of themselves, put themselves at risk for three years in the pandemic for us. On top of, you know, having, you know, done it normally in their work lives. They're angry. They're furious. It's so insulting to them. So it's gotta go. And the fact that the government is just intransigent on it is bizarre. We're underspent, by the way. Like in the last fiscal year, they underspent our healthcare um. Funding by one point eight billion dollars. It's not like the money isn't there. They're just being intransigent on it. Um which begs the question, like, do they want this? Wh- why? You know, and then um they're gonna have to attract them back. They're gonna have to provide some control over schedule, some ratios. So that the workload is not impossible and people don't get hurt in such huge numbers. And some protection from the violence that they're facing and the racism and so on in their workplaces all the time that's driving them out. Um and you know, they, it's not rocket science, really, what needs to be done. They just need to do it. At this point, the five uh unions that represent the workers in the hospitals. Send a letter to the minister asking for a meeting in the summer and she hasn't even answered. Like that's, I mean, this is, this is just, they're not even being bothered. So those measures we have to push. How do we push them? Well, we gotta make it visible. Like people in Ontario need to understand what's happening. Um and we can't just let them get away with a soundbite saying we're hiring six thousand people. So I do think we need to take to the streets. We do need to make it visible. Um we need to show our support for the public hospitals and 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 demand that Ford actually. Put our money where his mouth is and support the public hospitals and get us out of this situation and stop privatizing. Um so that's uh on that front, but we're on the privatization front. I'm gonna share my screen if this is okay. Like, uh sorry, I should say, sorry, Tracy, I'm going on a bit long. I'm trying to get get it all in. On the privatization front, like ultimately, we need. There's gonna need to be probably job action or something like that. And where we're moving this to is a province-wide referendum. Where we ask people to vote to stop them from privatizing our public hospitals and people can vote on it. If we were to get a million votes to stop them from privatizing and to force them to support our public hospitals. There's no question we would win. Any government would be completely shaken by that. Uh and especially, you know, the Ford government lost what, half a million votes between um the last election and this election, the only one because of low voter turnout. So um I'm gonna share my screen for a second. Going back to our website. So if you go to the main page of our website, sorry, it looks like. This. So if you look up Ontario Health, Riley put the link in the chat, but if you don't use the chat, it's just Ontario Health Coalition. If you Google that, um and the uh the address is here, ontariohealthcoalition.ca. This is what the website looks like. And there's all kinds of resources here. This is kind of a slideshow that goes across the top. And all of this is in the slideshow, but if you scroll down, it says Defender of Public Healthcare. And we're trying to get a million public Medicare defenders to sign up. It's not a membership or anything. It's just to get, you know, to count up the numbers of Ontarians who support this drive. To protect public healthcare from and our hospitals from this privatization. So you could do it right now. It takes literally just two minutes. You can sign up right now and you get counted on the counter below. See, and um so we're trying, we're gonna work our way up to a million there. And then um we're asking people, you can help, or you can hand out a leaflet explaining what's going on. We have these surveys of patients who've gone to private clinics and have been charged, you know, for your cataract surgery or your. Um you know, told to be, you have to pay for a dinish dietitian to get your colonoscopy or various things like that. Um so we're asking all of the retirees groups, all of the seniors groups and individuals. To take those surveys and fill them in because they'll give us the um evidence around the private clinics extra billing patients. Then we can bring a writ of mandamus, which is a court challenge. That forces the government to live up to its own legislation. In Ontario, we have the Protection of the Future of Medicare Act and at the Canada level, we have the Canada Health Act that forbid. Extra billing of patients, but the business model of the for-profit clinics is to bill OIP and bill patients too. So we need to catch them at it. You can fill them in anonymously. Um or you can give us your information so we can be in touch with you and then also promoting and attending the local protests. So that's what we're asking people to do. And in Windsor, I wondered, like, could we do something? Like, could we? Like, could we, in Quebec, the nurses did marches on bridges. They were super visible. They were in their scrubs and the public came out in support. And I just thought, could we do something like that in Windsor? The folks in Chatham said that they would come down in Cernia, you know, from the southwestern part of Ontario to join in. But could we do something like that? It could be, it doesn't have to be on a bridge. It could be in a very visible, you know, area where we could, you know, fill the area and we could leave like flowers and candles in support of and messages in support of the hospitals, the leadership and the hospital workers who've worked so hard for us, demand the Ford government finally take action to support them and stop privatizing. So I wondered what.
Yes, 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 we can do something like that. I think that, you know, we've got a really good group on here today, but I know there are many others that couldn't make it today that, that also, you know, are really keen to get involved and want to protect our public healthcare. So I was thinking of a site in Windsor and, you know, although bridges perhaps not as much, but I was thinking of the four corners at Walker and Tecumseh Road, right by the, the hospital, actually. I think that that's, you know, kind of a nice location where there's lots of space. There's a ton of traffic that goes constantly and might be a little bit safer than an overpass. But, you know, I think that we can definitely come up with an idea in Windsor where we could have this public action where obviously we have the media come out and, you know, we just continue to push. And I will say in the chat, Natalie, there's been some great conversations going on about contacting our local politicians, MPPs, as well as Doug Ford and Sylvia Jones, making sure that we're calling, that we're emailing, that we're putting that out to make sure that they're hearing our voices collectively here. So we can certainly email out, you know, some information, some contact information on them as well. So that people have that available to them. Because as much as we can to continue that pressure on them, I think is very effective from their constituents to hear from us directly. But yeah, I think that, you know, looking at, at some type of larger action in Windsor is something that, you know, we, we definitely can do. And it's just a bit of getting a date together and, and.
What about like in, we're trying to do them all like around that weekend of December, the 10th, 11th. So like Ottawa is gonna do it. We're trying to get not a lot of them happening, just a few in different areas of the province to cover the province. So Ottawa is gonna do noon on the, the December the 9th, outside Chio, which is the Children's Hospital of Eastern Ontario and the general site of the Ottawa Hospital. And then Toronto is gonna do Monday, the December the 12th at noon and Phil Hospital Row downtown, like the big, where all the big hospitals are. If Windsor one, would like, maybe we could discuss and sort of come to a date here so that we can leave with something concrete. Like would either of those work?
What if folks think of like the Saturday, the 10th? Or we could do it, we could do the same on Monday, the 12th, if that's when they're, they're having theirs, you said, in, in Ottawa?
Yeah, Toronto is Monday, the 12th. Yeah, so they're doing noon.
Okay, so what, what do people think of that? Monday, December 12th at noon?
And you're saying the four corners? So that's like to come, what is that?
Tecumseh Road and Walker Road.
Tecumseh and Walker, okay. So it's, is it super visible at noon on like a Monday there? Is there lots of traffic and stuff?
Yes, like it's a very, it's kind of one of the main intersections, right?
Yeah, I can kind of picture it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So people, what do people think? People, some people have their thumbs up. Thank you, Pamela. What, what about others?
I see some thumbs up. Yeah, yeah. You know, I think, I think if we can pick a date and a time, you know, and we put the call out there, I think people will come. You know, I think that, that lots of folks down here always come when we hold our Health Coalition events and, and are certainly supportive. So, you know, we have the labor community, we have the broader community, we have patients and families and healthcare workers, like we have all kinds of, of folks that would come.
Let's see, just so if we can, do people know how to raise their hand? If you go to the bottom, there's a little reactions button. It has a smiley face with a plus. And if you click on it, there's all these different reactions. And at the bottom, it says raise hand with a little hand. If you would come on December the 12th at noon and get some other people, can you raise your hand? Let's just test the room here and see what we're looking at. Five of you? Five of you. Wait a minute.
No, more, more.
No one's applauding.
Two, four, six, eight.
They're looking for, so.
Yeah, yeah.
On your screen, just slightly to the right, it's a smiley face with a plus sign. Click on that. And then the raised hand is at the bottom of the little.
Okay, some people, some people in the chat are saying they can't find it, but their hand is.
Their hand is raised. Okay, look at that. That's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What I, I see there's a concern, something about when the reps aren't there, but I'm not sure what that means. Because we'll definitely, I think maybe you're talking about the politicians. But listen, I think that this could be an initial action. And certainly we know where those politicians have their offices and, you know, we can discuss further actions if that's what people are thinking in the future too. But I think one big collective action would be fantastic.
At that point, the legislature rises on the 7th. So they'll be home. And by the way, they totally know when we're doing something, they pay attention. They know it. They, you know, their spokespeople set up and so on, you know, they're, they're, they absolutely know it. Okay, good. Yay. So we have that.
Okay.
People go on and become Medicare defenders, so we can get to a million. Will you get your members to do that? Those of you that have organizations and so on? And then the surveys, because I would like to do with the people who want to share like their information, press conferences across the province to raise, you know, tell people what the private clinics do, how much they're charging people for medically needed services in violation of the law, how they're pulling, you know, staff and resources out of our public hospitals, making things worse in the public hospitals, you know, for them to make money and so on. Like, you know, lay out the arguments. And then we'd also, I think, if we can bring a writ of mandamus and force them to uphold the Canada Health Act and stop these private clinics, it would close the doors on a bunch of them because they're not, that's their business model. That's how they make their profits.
And I see in the chat, yes, we can, you know, make our own protest signs, but there are printable things that are available on our website as well. If people want to print those off and bring them, but we can certainly make protest signs. And yes, we will alert the media as well and let them know that we're there.
So do we, is it possible to do a local organizing meeting? Like if people want to help?
Yes.
Organize? Okay.
Yeah, why, why don't we do that?
Email to everyone, right? And just like share that info. Tracy's so busy. Can, are there a couple of people that can help Tracy coordinate with the local coalition? She, you know, she's like, does, she's a gem. She's golden. And, you know, I don't know how she does it all, but if anyone wants to volunteer to help Tracy, please put it in the chat.
Pam, I see Pam's hand up. Pam's.
We need some co-chairs in, in Windsor that can help.
We do.
Okay.
Okay, Pam. Awesome. Do others have their hand up or is their hand still up from the voting?
You go back to reactions and then you can lower your hand. Sorry.
There are, I was thinking, wow, everybody's gonna come. Well, this is, this is fabulous then. And I, I think, yes, we can set a, a planning meeting, you know, within the next week. Get this together and, and get it going. I'm, I'm super excited and very thankful for so many people coming on today. All right, well, I think that we, we have a good plan going forward. Lots of people saying that they can help and volunteer. So we'll send out an email with the next meeting, the planning meeting, right? Get that together. We have that date set. So we can start to, to share that more widely with our circles to let them know that's the date and time. So that's December 12th at noon at Tecumseh Road and Walker Road. There's a wide four-corner there. There's parking around the corner at the Union Hall on Turner Road. If people want to park there and walk over, I think there's lots of space. And of course, we'll dress warmly and, and bring our protest signs. So hopefully we'll see a lot of you on that planning meeting as well. If you can make it, please do come and, and help us to do that. Thank you to Pam for stepping up. And I just really want to thank Riley, who's behind the scenes, doing a lot of work. And, and I'll hand it over to Natalie, I think, for some final words. And, and with a great thanks from the Windsor Health Coalition to Natalie for all of her efforts as well.
Thank you. Thanks so much, everyone. So we won't take more of your time today because I think we're doing really well. Riley, will you save the chat? Because I didn't get to see everything. I'll read it all. And then if there are questions and things that we missed, we'll get to them. But I think we've got a really good plan. And so I think we're good. Please just watch your email. Everyone who registered here, we got your email. And so we'll send a follow-up email with just really simply put those things that we promised. And then we can move forward from there. Thank you so much. Yay. And Riley, I don't want to go before you've saved the chat. You got it? You got it? Okay, good. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Natalie.
Thanks a lot, guys.